All right, good evening. It is, let's say, 7:40. This is the regular meeting of the District 25 School Board. We just broke close session. Madam Secretary, note the role, and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution, and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to recognitions and presentations. We don't have any recognitions, but we do have two presentations. One is the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Audit Report, and this will be submitted by Jason Coyle from Baker Tilly LLC. Jason, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. Good to be with you. For the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That is a higher level of reporting than you're required to do, if you will. A comprehensive, in its name, kind of implies that there's a lot of information in there. And that comprehensive part includes a lot of transparency, I like to say, in your financial reporting that you're not necessarily required to do. So congratulations on continuing to do kind of above and beyond by issuing the CAFER. Within the financial statements is three pages from our firm, which is our opinion, and that opinion is an unmodified or unqualified opinion. Highest level of assurance we can give over your financial information. What that means in basic terms, it's that somebody could pick up your financial statements and rely on the information in there in all material respects as they evaluate the health of the district. So congratulations on continuing to get an unmodified opinion there. Near the beginning of your financial statements, on page four, is a section called the MDNA, which stands for Management's Discussion Analysis. It kind of summarizes what went on during the year and compares it to the prior year. I always encourage governing body members to read that small section of the financial statements. Your financial statements, you know, are 150 pages long. You might not want to look through all that, but I would at least encourage you to read through the MDNA. There's even some nice pie charts in there that put things in pictorial form. For example, it shows where your revenues are coming from. It'll show 59% of your revenues come in the form of property taxes. It'll also show where your expenditures are going. And 83% goes directly back to the instruction and transportation of students, for example. You know, once we get into the meat of the financial statements, if you will, on page 12, if you're following along, is your statement of net position. I always like to point out this statement. Basically, what this statement does is pull all the funds that you're used to seeing together into one column. And also on there is your capital assets, so your investments in your buildings and in vehicles, along with all of your long-term debt. And the thing that's in here that you usually don't end up talking about, except for once a year during the audit, is your net pension liabilities for TRS and IREF, along with other post-employment benefit liabilities for benefits you provide to retirees other than pensions. So, you know, as in Illinois, and pension benefits are talked about often here, the total of all of those long-term liabilities for all the pensions and the other post-employment benefits comes to $60.6 million, and that's incorporated within that financial statement. Within the notes, there's a lot of other information on those liabilities as well, but I always like to discuss that because it tends to be the only time we really bring that up. Getting into your funds in your financial statements on page 16 and 17, this is the revenue and expenses of the funds you're used to seeing on a, you know, monthly basis in your board packets. In here, there's a fund called the General Fund. That's made up of your educational fund, your TORT fund, and your working cash fund. So you probably typically see those broken out, but in here, they're put together in one fund. In the back of the report, they are broken out in more detail by those individual components. So your general fund increased fund balance for the year by $1.9 million. Overall, your funds increased by $766,000. One of the things I always like to look at is the ratio of expenses to fund balance, particularly in the general fund. Remember, this does incorporate your working cash fund, but in the audit, you're at 64.5%, which, you know, a nice, healthy place to be there. There's a lot more information in your CAFER that I wasn't going to go into. There's a lot of notes to the financial statements, and in the back of it, there's a lot of great budget-to-actual comparisons, along with the comparisons of the prior year, that I'd always encourage you to look through if you want some more detailed information. One of the other documents that we helped prepare, though, at the conclusion of the audit is your AFR, or Annual Financial Report, that's submitted to the State Board of Education, ISB. The one thing I wanted to point out in there is on page four is a financial profile score. ISB does this calculation for every school district in the state. You are in the status of recognition, which is the highest status that you could be applied on that financial profile score. There's different ratios that the state utilizes to come up with that, including fund balance to revenue ratio, expenses to revenue ratio, days cash on hand, short-term borrowings and long-term borrowings. And there's a number categorization that goes with that, four being the highest. You're at four in all those categories, except for the long-term debt margin. You're at a three there. So in total, you're at 3.9 out of four. You know, that's a nice place to be, and again, categorized as recognition status by the State Board. One of the other documents that we prepared is your single audit, which is the audit of some of your federal funding. Obviously, you get quite a bit of federal funding, about $3.2 million during the year. We audited one of the major programs in that package, which was your child nutrition cluster, and we had no findings on that program. So congratulations on not receiving any findings during that audit. There's one last piece of communication that we have, and that's what we call our communication letter from us to board and management. And in there, we incorporate any recommendations for improvement in your internal controls, should we come across those. And I'm happy to report, we didn't have anything that rose to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness that we needed to incorporate into that document. So that means your checks and balances that you have in place are functioning appropriately, and, you know, congratulations on that. That's really the end of my prepared remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think that's a short audit, relatively painless, right? Any questions, comments, and concerns?
I don't have any concerns. I have a couple of questions. So is the audit done over the IT controls as well for all of the reporting, or is it just done over the business process audit controls, please?
Yes and no. We look at some of your IT controls, to the extent they relate to the financial numbers. So there's a lot of other, you know, IT controls that we don't look at. You know, could somebody get into your system from outside? You know, we don't look at that, for example. So, but we do look at some of them to make sure that, you know, are you backing up your systems, for example, so that we know you're not going to lose your financial data? So we look at that kind of stuff, yes. So it's kind of a yes and no, depending upon what scope of your IT infrastructure you're looking at there.
Okay. So then, everything else is the business process controls. Is there quality audit as well?
No, and we don't actually provide an opinion on your internal controls either. I should probably point that out, you know, given your question. What we do is we look at the internal controls to help us plan our audit and evaluate where the risks in your internal control structure might be. And the byproduct of that is if we come up with anything that might need to be improved based on our recommendation, we would communicate that to you. And that's where I was getting at. We didn't have anything that came to our attention that we would communicate to you. But again, we don't give an opinion on your internal controls.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Rich? No? You have your mic on. Anything else? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good to be with you. Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have Presentation of Climate and Culture 2021, a report by Svetlana Pavovic from HumanX Ventures.
As we're cleaning off the area, the board will remember, Svetlana was with us a year ago when we first did our first climate and culture survey using the HumanX Ventures tool. And so we're now in the second of a three-year plan, and she has come back to share with you the district-wide results. And following this, all schools will get school-wide results to share with staff. And then Svetlana works with each of our building leadership teams to talk about those results, plan goals, plan celebrations for moving forward.
Good evening, Board of Education and administrative team and visitors. I'd like to preview the data. Last year, we talked about climate and culture, what it is and why this survey was important. And we're going to go fast forward, and something new that we added this year was, to the 74 questions that we usually ask for, the climate and culture questions, we added 74 equity and inclusion questions as well, so that report is in there, 15 dimensions. So as we look at all of the dimensions this year, I want to point out to the very top 71% participation is, we're right in the ballpark where we were last year. We were at 73% participation of employees, and that's phenomenal, from one year to the next year, plus the fact that we were changing the environment in which our teachers were working in. So we were very pleased with the percentage of participation, so highly engaged staff again this year. And as we look at all of the current means, you do notice that some of the means, most all of them, actually shifted downward. But when you look at the overall, only two dimensions, performance planning and mission conscious, actually fall below the 4.0. We are, we mark the 4.0 mean as significant, and once we achieve a dimension is at 4.0 or above, it is really considered a great organization. This template would be a perfect template if everything was at a 5.0, which is the mean. So the fact that only two dimensions, and again, performance planning is about the evaluation cycle, and mission conscious is business decisions are made in relation to the mission and vision of the district. And again, it's a 3.92. What I think is significant to point out in the top five this year is that pride is, pride showed, came to the top. Last year, pride was not part of the top five, and so the two that switched out is that pride and satisfaction actually flipped positions. So in a time where we have asked our employees to shift their environment of where they're asked to do their work, it is fantastic to see that although the satisfaction dropped, their pride increased. Otherwise, all of the other top five dimensions, the other four, have remained in the same When we look at the, this is the three-by-three, mapping out satisfaction and employee engagement. So the dream box is that red circle, so 66.22% is the percentage of highly engaged, highly satisfied employees this year. Last year, it was 81.61. I calculated the top corner, and that top corner are highly engaged and satisfied. And last year, in 2019, you were at 91.46. This year, you're in 81. I'd like to remind you that the average dream box in education is 61%. So you're still well above the average, even in significant change in work environment for your teachers this year. The average in business, in our business communities, is 35%. So educators are really well above. And you're still average of 81.23% of highly engaged and highly satisfied employees. And you're looking at that inner black circle of Ls. That's where we've picked up a lot more percentages. So it's not that people are dissatisfied. It's not that they fell very far. They're still engaged and satisfied, just not as high as they were last year. Then in the lower corner, the low satisfaction, low engagement, again, last year, we were at 2.46, this time 6.53. And so we're looking at those, and we will be looking at those across the schools and across the district. This is mapping out actual participation. Participation is actually really important, almost more important, I would say, than the percentile of satisfaction and engagement, because the participation gives the data its integrity. So when we are at 71% informed, what we're always looking for every year, year after year, is to get 100% participation. That then gives our data credibility. But most average districts average around the 70 to 75% engagement. Very few are really able to accomplish the 85 to 90% participation. And especially with the remote circumstances, this is a survey that is done online. It can be done remote from any device. I was really pleasant, you know, it was wonderful to see that staff's still engaged in it. So here's the participation. Blue is actually, the actual number of employees that we were looking at per building, and then the number of, I mean, blue is actual, the orange is the expected. And so each one of the administrators, we had conversations about increasing it. I think they did a wonderful job getting out the news, and the teachers did a fantastic job filling it out. Here is the dream box averages. Again, 2019 is in blue, 2020 is in orange. Across the board, all of the schools experienced a little bit of a change, a dip, in their dream box percentiles. Again, that's something that, from last year to this year, as I worked with the teacher leadership teams at each one of the schools as they created goals, they already understand the language, the literacy of the data. They're going to very quickly take this data and measure it against their goals that they had last year. These are the top five questions. So again, very high mean, 4.6 is zero. Highest question that the majority of the 598 employees said, "I am committed to the success of our organization." And this survey was given, I think, end of November, beginning of December. And so that is, it's just wonderful to see. These are all great celebrations. I feel great pride. I'm fully engaged. I'm in a role that I have the opportunity to do both well and enjoy. And I'm continuously seeking ways to improve my overall productivity. And innovation was one of those that also really rose this year as well. So considering the culture and climate of the work environment, this is really fantastic news and areas to celebrate for the teachers in the district. Even looking at the bottom five questions, the lowest question, 3.5, I can't really say it's very low, it's average, but business decisions made consistent with our mission and core values. I feel in on things, so communication, relationships, coaching from their supervisors, administrators. And then there, you see the past three months supervisors with the evaluation process. That's another process that, because of the circumstances we've asked our teachers in, that took a little bit of a hit. And I've received meaningful recognition in the past 10 days. So again, those questions still holding steady where they were last year to this year. So fantastic news. This is now a look completely different. This is a benchmark. We did not have this data for you last year. This data will only, as we expand on this survey, that is brand-new for us, we will start to be able to parcel out different demographics. But overall, this is an attempt to take a look at equity, inclusion, diversity in the district. The top five questions, again, out of a mean of five, I have to tell you that of all 24 questions, only two questions fell below the 4.0, and that is fantastic. Even those two questions are in the high 3-point-something range. So the questions are really geared to the workforce, so "I'm committed to positively contributing to the culture of inclusion, diversity, and equity. I'm committed to a positive contributor to the workplace, anti-hate, anti-racism with equality." Even a question in there in the top five is "My team models kindness, respect for all, and I value the contributions of all team members." So all 24 of these questions, this is something new that teachers will be looking at, the administrators will be looking at, and we're going to start to open up conversations now that we have data around it. Bottom five questions. So the lowest questions, those two that you see, 3.95 and 3.76, again, relatively low. This is a fantastic benchmark to have this year as we go into next year. Our organization demonstrates quality efforts in building a culture of diversity. And so that's fantastic that you have that number as 3.76 as your benchmark, and I think that that's solid. Diversity in ideas, viewpoints, cultures, backgrounds, qualities, and perspectives are represented and valued in our organization. Again, very high numbers, great benchmark, a great place to start our conversations. And that's all. I have included in the rest of your report, I linked to last year's report as well. Any questions from the board from this year to, from last year to this year?
Mr. President?
Anisha.
Thank you so much for that very comprehensive report. I love your optimism and, you know, ranking us as high in all these different areas, as climate and culture. I think what, kind of jumping out of me a little bit, of course, this is a pandemic, right? It's been a difficult year for our whole community, including our schools and our students. And even, so would you say, even though when the numbers are high, we're above 4.0, but in our district, usually those numbers are much higher? So when there is a 10% dip in different, kind of these different areas, then is there a shift in morale? Did you notice that?
Very good question. Really, the correlation between the morale and the culture and climate are not, that can't measure feelings. We're measuring perceptions based on specific question items. So we can't project the 66% to say our teachers don't have morale. I would guide you back to these dimensions. Conversations that I've had with teachers and administrators is we're very stressed this year, stressed. And our culture is stressed, and we're under a lot of stress. And I really redirect everybody to these dimensions of healthy cultures and climate. These are your stressors. When we don't communicate, when we don't have healthy relationships, when we aren't pride, when we're not engaged in our work. So if we want to de-stress our organization, here is data and dimensions that are research-based from industrial and organizational psychology to say, "I understand the feeling of stress." But each and every one of us controls our stress. But here's actionable dimensions that we can't control to increase or de-stress the system. How about we work on our relationships? What does the data say? How about we work on recognition? The fact that recognition and satisfaction, especially satisfaction, is down in the bottom five this year, I know that that's going to be a conversation with the teacher teams. So my belief in what data is, is a start of a conversation, and that's exactly what this data is meant to do and what the teachers did last year. So I can't comment on morale, or how stressed they feel, or even if it is because of the pandemic. All I can comment on is you have 71% of your employees, 598 employees, that have commented on these 15 dimensions, and will be taking action items and looking into that.
Thanks, because it's really informative and data-driven, so I really appreciate those numbers. And I love that you added the diversity, equity, inclusion measures as a benchmark this year, so we can continue building. And already, there are some high numbers there, so thanks for that.
Yes, thank you. Good, I'm glad. Any other questions?
So I think my question is actually more directed at Dr. Bine. So this is really great information. Is this given to the Strategic Plan Committee for use and incorporation into the measurements and the goals and objectives?
So they use last year's data as part of their data exploration in the process of strategic planning. Their, the whole team has passed kind of this year's report already, but as the next group kind of takes, once we finalize strategic planning, which is very close, we have one more meeting, then it becomes, it goes to an action planning team, and that action planning team will have access to this. But they did use last year's as part of their data retreat.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Rich?
Yeah, just a quick question. So in your analysis, you know, the slide that talked about participation by school, I think it was a little bit, yeah, somewhere. Any thought of why a shift, why there was different shifts between the schools, or is it just, again, pandemic year, all things are kind of odd?
Again, when we say a shift in percentile, you were at 73% participation last year and 71% this year. So I feel that that percentile is really very, very close. I know that the process that we went through this year was the same as last year. I reached out to each one of the individual principals, the administrative team reached out. I really don't think that that's an effect of the pandemic, because this was given remotely last year, it was given remotely this year. I think that this is probably your benchmark. We might always see that, you know, teachers are, you know, around that same 70 to 75% participation on this survey.
And then back, maybe, jumping off of where Gina was going with this. So at some point, then, would we be getting a readout saying, "Here are the three, four, or five action steps that we're doing. You know, we're reinforcing the positives, we're going to..." What are the action steps that would come out of this, you know, for the staff?
So the action steps happen at the school level. Each school building leadership team reviews this data. Some schools choose to do it as a whole staff. They all see the data, but then either the whole staff or building leadership team determine with Svetlana what are our main things that we want to celebrate, and what are our action steps that we can take for our dimensions that are low in our particular school? And they do those at that level. So it's not something that we've shared at the board, because it's done, it's different at every school based on their own analysis with Svetlana of their school-level data.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? That's good to see, you know, just you've said many times during this trying times that I challenge any profession now that would come out glaring, and I think District 25, I see pride, has moved up. I think our teachers are just excited to do the job in whatever way they can. So I hope next year is, you said benchmarks, let's raise the bar.
Exactly.
So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, board. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into public comments. I think, see, we have one more right now. This is where the public may address the board. I have a new, it's a new script, so bear with me, because I haven't memorized this one yet. This is the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meeting in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Address the board only at the time, on the agenda, and only after being recognized by the board president. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to conserve time to allow maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you make, you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. So with that, with that, let's start. We have Brittany Polahronis.
I would have liked the podium there. Gives you something to hold on to. Hi, Brittany Polahronis, 336 West Way, Raleigh Court. Trying to follow the rules. Good evening. This is a totally different environment than I've been used to at the last 10 board meetings I've spoken at, it feels like. But I just wanted to address the board and the superintendent with a quote that I think we really need to carry forward. Everything matters because everything communicates. This is one of my favorite quotes in my advertising career, as it states simply how important not only words are, but what you do matters, how you say it matters, and why you say it matters. I believe that one of the biggest issues surrounding District 25 is communication. From day one of this pandemic, parents, teachers, students have been stressed, hurt, and confused by what others have said, how they said it, and why they said it. As we have moved into Phase Four and planning for the future, I ask that the superintendent and the board get crystal clear about how they communicate, because it does matter. The board meetings, the emails from both the superintendent, the principal, the nursing staff, and everyone, we need to examine what our leaders are saying and decide what kind of district we want to be. Let's embark today on a new culture, one that is agile and encouraging, and when we make a mistake, we are not afraid to admit it and work together to find a new solution. Yes, these are difficult times, and there is no quick fix, but we must get crystal clear with our vision and decide today that we're going to trust each other to bring back the balance. We are all partners in this. There are no tides, and we must rebuild the trust. Thank you to the board and the superintendents, the teachers and the staff, and to the parents. You guys have been amazing, and thank you for your countless hours.
From day one of this pandemic, parents, teachers, students have been stressed, hurt, and confused by what others have said, how they said it, and why they said it. As we have moved into Phase Four and planning for the future, I ask that the Superintendent and the Board get crystal clear about how they communicate, because it does matter. The Board meetings, the emails from both the Superintendent, the principal, the nursing staff, and everyone, we need to examine what our leaders are saying and decide what kind of district we want to be. Let's embark today on a new culture, one that is agile and encouraging. And when we make a mistake, we are not afraid to admit it and work together to find a new solution. Yes, these are difficult times, and there is no quick fix, but we must get crystal clear with our vision and decide today that we're going to trust each other to bring back the balance. We are all partners in this. There are no tides, and we must rebuild the trust. Thank you to the Board and the Superintendents, the teachers and the staff, and to the parents. You guys have been amazing, and thank you for your countless hours.
All right, thank you, Brittany. Next, we have Katie Rousch.
Hello, Katie Rousch, 711 East Suffield Drive. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to start by thanking the Board for the countless hours that they have put in and all the meetings they've attended these last few months. I'm excited to see all students who choose in-person learning get to be back in their classroom with their teachers. I'm happy to hear that the IEP and 504 students, who have already been invited back, now have the opportunity to learn and socialize with their peers. I hope our community can move forward as one. In the months to come, we need to make a plan for next year now. We don't know what the world will look like at this time, but we must be ready for it. Please reflect on the current model this year. Communicate with your staff and provide the best learning models that reflect the input of all involved. We all have one goal, to keep our community safe and continue to have the best educators teaching our children. We respect and care deeply for our teachers. We continue to support them during these ever-changing times. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we have Todd Withrow.
Todd Withrow, 731 South Roosevelt Avenue. So, I've been here many times over the last four months, both in person as well as in your inbox, and that was a lot of times during the times of division. So, I thought it was equally as important for me to be here as a parent, as well as a community member, to be here in times, I think, of, to share good stories. So, I want to share a story with you from today. It was literally like Christmas morning in my household. My seven-year-old first grader, Dryden, was so excited when she woke up, which was actually 2:00 AM, couldn't get her back to sleep, because she was so excited to be going back to full in-person today. I know that's a process that has taken a long time for us as a community and a board in a district to get to, and I know that the excitement that she had was felt by many students as well, too. And I think it really is important, because for me, that's what the district does, creates an excitement environment for which our children want to learn and develop, not only our children, but also our teachers and our staff. I felt that today, and I think her three-year-old was probably the saddest one, because she wanted to go to school as well, too, and today wasn't a day for her to go to school. What I want to talk about, though, as well, too, is to say thank you, because I think as Board members, this is probably more than any of you thought you had ever signed up for when you took on this opportunity. And it is a volunteer opportunity, and I know it's been a very tough, troubling, probably five, six, seven, even 12 months, as this went back to March. And as an individual community member, what I do think is I respect all of the opinions, I respect all the positions that you have taken throughout this process, but I am very excited that my child and the other children in the district are able to go full-time. I think we're going to have to make sure that we're being mindful as we go forward. COVID is not going to go away, because we're full in-person. It's likely that cases are still going to be present, but I think that you've proven as a district that the mitigation steps you've taken in our buildings have been very successful. Last time I looked, we were at 7% in-school transmission. That shows what the studies have showed, that the schools are a safe place for our students, for our teachers, and for our staff. And I think undoubtedly, we're going to have to continue to learn, because we will learn new things as the classrooms are more full, as the teachers engage with the students, and we will have to adapt. And so, since we are a learning community, and since we are a learning district, we need to make sure that we're reaching out to other districts, we're talking to our teachers, we're talking to our students, and we continue to learn and continue to adjust the model. What we have today will probably not be what it looks like at the end of the year, and that's okay. But let's keep pushing forward, and let's keep doing the right things for our kids, the community, the teachers, and the staff, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Next, we have Carrie Hood.
Carrie Hood, 1025 East Cherry Lane. I want to start off by saying thank you to everyone in this room for all your countless hours and hard work, and all the meetings and emails, everything you've endured, and just to get our kids back in school. My kids have been so excited to be back in school. They actually are at Ivy Hill, so they've been back four full days a week since mid-December. But today was like the first day of school all over again. As we walked to school, they saw more cars than we have all school year at drop-off, and they were just like running to the doors. It was great, so thank you. And I think there's a lot of people who were afraid and didn't know what to expect, and so they hesitated getting their kids back. But I think a lot of those people now have their kids in school, and I think it's just amazing. It's a testament to all the mitigations our district has put in place in everything that the teachers are doing and the staff is doing to keep things running and operating smoothly and to keep everybody safe. One question I have, and I know Dr. Bynne touched on it a meeting or two ago, is how a full school week went from five days to four days. I know teachers are working very hard to plan and be able to teach both in-person and over the screen at the same time, but there's got to be another way to get these kids back in school full-time. And also to echo someone else's comments tonight, I do hope that the district is planning for next school year. I know there's people talking and worried that we're just going to repeat this process, and I don't think anyone in this room wants to repeat that. I just hope that we continue moving forward, do whatever, take some of this extra work off of our teachers. They can't continue on like this, but the answer is not to send our kids back remote. Our kids can't handle that again. So, thank you again, and let's just keep moving forward in our district.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. Nice, I shared, because the car line was way down the street today, so it was a crazy time, which is a good problem to have. Next, we have Mary Ann Zaleski.
Good evening, Mary Ann Zaleski, 944 North Fernandez Avenue. I'm here tonight just to say thank you to the Board. Again, I'll echo what Todd said, which is, I know, a year ago, none of us saw this situation. And I know that you guys are volunteers and that this is not what you signed up for, so thank you for all of the time that you have put forth. I am here to say that our teachers are amazing. I recently have spoken with a few of them, and I'm here almost on behalf of them. And I have a few things to say, which is, we need better communication from the top down. There is communication that is missing between you and the teachers. There is communication that is missing from administration and the teacher input. There needs to be another way for us to collectively hear from them, and I understand there's a teachers' union. I'm, I was, I'm part of one. But we need a better way. We need to find a better way for teachers to be able to have input into what their day and their job is going to look like. It is sad to me that I look around this room, and there's not one of them here. And I understand why. They're exhausted. They're burnt out. They're being asked to teach in a way that we have historically never had to teach before. They're exhausted. But they're not here, and you're not hearing from them. You need to do better, and I'm not, I don't know where the woman went that was presenting earlier, but that showed that there is a satisfaction rate that matters, and it's missing. So, I'm here to say that there's a little bit more deeper research that each one of you needs to reach out to the teachers in this district and try to have a chat, because you're not hearing them. You've heard from us, us parents, we've been writing to you, we've been calling, we've been meeting, and you've listened to us, and I thank you for that. But the teachers are not able to speak up. And many of them are so happy to be back with their students. That is what a lot of them have wanted this entire time. This is, that's what we do. We want to be with our students all the time, okay? And in this, you know, we've, they've made the best of what this year has presented to us, but I'm truly just here to say, please find a way to hear more from them directly, and not just the same ones all the time, okay? It needs to be everyone, because sometimes the loudest voices in the room only present one side of something, as we know. And I think that it's, from what I'm hearing, that it needs, there needs to be a little bit more listening to both sides of how people feel. So, that's one thing I was, came here tonight, and I know that people want five days a week. I get it, and if somebody's watching this and they're wondering the same thing, just, we need to ride this out, I think. In talking to the teachers, I understand that that Monday is very necessary right now, because again, the planning that is going into that, and if you guys have never been teachers, I'm telling you right now, like, what is being asked of teachers is more than they've been handed ever in the history of teaching. So, Mondays are very important, but if we find that in the next couple of weeks, like, this is working, and we can do this, maybe it, if, and I don't know, this is a decision maybe you guys can talk about, maybe you guys can talk about, you know, what should Mondays look like now that things are kind of moving forward, right? Do we need to have remote Mondays? So, I just hope that becomes part of the conversation. Really, that's why I came here to say thank you, and that you need to do something to make sure that the teachers' voices are actually being heard here, because you hear from us, but you're not hearing from that.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
So, thanks.
You have online public comments? Can I share those?
Sure.
Thank you. These are public comments that were submitted online by noon today. These, as well as any others that were submitted by the start of the meeting, will be posted online on our website on Board Docs tomorrow. There were three comments asking the Board to not change the metrics for Step Four, six comments encouraging the Board to delete the use of metrics for Step Four, nine comments encouraging the Board to move to five full days of in-person learning, one comment that a 12-year-old youth was banned from District 25 property four years ago, and he should be allowed back on property, three comments encouraging us to please remember to care for our remote learners, one comment asking what percentage of students are now in-person versus remote, one comment that a parents have a Right to Know group is pushing for more notification of COVID-19 cases, and the person says this should not be entertained due to privacy, one comment suggesting we eliminate homeroom at the middle schools as this would reduce a period of movement, five comments thanking the Board of Education for working to put kids back into school, one comment saying we should not be returning to in-person learning with a more contagious strain and fluctuating metrics, one comment that children are not safely distanced at school while the Board is distanced at meetings, one comment asking the Board to please open busing to paid riders, one comment saying that I'm concerned about teachers' safety, please make sure they have six feet distancing and N95 masks available, one comment saying suicide and mental health is not a joking matter and shouldn't be treated as such. There was a letter submitted, signed by 67 names, thanking the Board for their work to get kids into school, one comment saying to open the 2021-2022 school year with a more typical five-day in-person instruction, one comment saying the abrupt move for in-person learning is not safe, hybrid allowed for in-person learning with appropriate distancing, one comment saying please include all supporting auditor documentation on Board Docs, and one comment saying allow remote students back before spring break on a case-by-case basis as more vaccines are available for the family members they may be caring for.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We need approval of consent agenda items. Do we have an action or a motion?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Erin.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows: Personnel Report, an addendum to Personnel Report, Treasurer's Report, Invoices, Public Hearing on the 2020 Tax Levy Minutes of December 10, 2020, Regular and Closed Session Meeting Minutes of December 10, 2020, Special and Closed Session Meeting Minutes of December 17, 2020, Special and Closed Session Meeting Minutes of January 7, 2021.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, there was a tie there. I'm going to give it to Anisha, Anisha. Erin and Anisha. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Concerns, excuse me. All right, with that, we'll take it to a vote. Rich, start with you.
Yes.
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 All right, the vote passes six, or the motion passes actually six, nothing. Next, we have communications to and from Board members, and we'll start with NSSEO. Erin?
I'm happy to report that the NSSEO Re-Engage in Learning program is returned to hybrid for the last couple of weeks, so that is moving steadily along. In the good news category for them as well, they've been working to save money for Timber Ridge School, a new gym, and an elevator. So, this has been years in the making, and the total cost is $6.3 million, and they've saved $6 million, so it's moving ahead, and, you know, obviously, there's a great deal of excitement. They're going to bids now for that. I want to mention the shining star for this month is a kindergartner from District 59 who, his family was able to take advantage of the remote learning by, although he's a kindergartner, he does not walk. And so, they built a, they covered a room with padded flooring, like, you know, I know you know about what I'm talking about, even though I can't say it, like those piece, the puzzle piece soft flooring, and then they put a railing along the walls of the room at his height, so that he could walk. And he used the time at home to have more playtime with his older brother, and he took his first steps. So, there is some light, even in remote learning, for some families, so that was certainly something to celebrate.
Yeah, that's wonderful. It's always good every, every month to hear the stories from, coming through, because it's every month you outdo, outdo the story from the, from the last month. It's wonderful, so thank you for, for sharing that. Next, we have ISB, that's usually our President Brian Sereniglia, but I'm going to pass it off to Anisha, because I know you always give us some good stuff. So, Anisha?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Now, ISB continues to have great programs. I was able to, you know, listen to, and I want to share with the Board. They had a presentation earlier this, last week, actually, on, from two superintendents as far as just proactive measures, with schools going back in and proactive measures to keep the schools safe. So, that was a great presentation. One of the superintendents was from Gower Middle School, the Gower District in the Burrage area, so I'll, I'll share that document with you. It was video-recorded as well. And then, we know, we have a lot of new Board members running, or new candidates running, so ISB is offering lots of candidate conversations for people who are interested in school boards, so it'd be grateful for people to participate in those as well, and that's all on the ISB's website. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, I know ISB yearly for the AAA conference, I always, the school safety stuff is huge. They, they offer a great program for that incorporated before the conference itself, and that's valuable. I'm glad they value that, because that's important, and especially for newer candidates to see what, what this is all about, and not just, not just pandemic-related, but that the kind of month-to-month, it looks like this, so that's great stuff. EdRed, Anisha again, and Stacy Malek.
You can go first, Stacy.
EdRed tomorrow is having their legislative roundtables, so they're still, I believe, through today, accepting anyone who wants to sign up for the various panels to speak with various legislators. Again, that meeting is tomorrow.
Yeah, there are different sessions. Yeah, I'll add on to what Stacy's saying, and 10:30 to 11:00 is actually our local legislator, so State Senator Ann Gillespie will be there, Representative Mark Walker will be there, and Ann Gillespie, as we know, has done a lot of work, was an EdRed champion, and she serves on the education committees, so her session's 10:30 to 11:00. But there are ones that go throughout the day to help us understand the different legislative efforts that are happening in Capitol, you know, in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to communications to Board members. We'll start off with PTAs, Liz Nierman.
Yeah, I have, the only one we have something from today is the PTA. They submitted something they were unable to attend, but asked me to read it on their behalf. So, from Arlington Heights Council of
So from the Arlington Heights Council of PTAs, "Thank you to all the parents who joined us for our evening with a therapist event last month. Due to high demand and parent schedule conflicts, we will be running the event Parent Emotions: Setting the Tone in Our Families," again on this Sunday, January 24th, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Kristen Marzal, a social worker, will speak about how our emotions as parents affect our children and how to handle big feelings at home. You can find the RSVP form on the Arlington Heights Council of PTA's Facebook page and also on their website, which is A H C P T A dot org. The senior scholarship applications are now live. This year, there will be six achievement scholarships and three Power of Courage scholarships awarded to graduating seniors who attended District 25 schools. Their applications are due on February 21st, and you can find more information and the links to apply again on their website at A H C P T A dot org. We will also be hosting a summer scholarship program for elementary-age students. More information will be coming soon.
All right, thank you. And from what you said, there's no further communications to the board, uh, from ABC25 or the ATA. Um, so we move on to the superintendent's report for the transition model of reopening update. And this is an action item, but I think we'll, your presentation first before we...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Okay. So as you know, we have entered Step Four, um, where students who choose to can be in person and we continue, you see the bar below that we've always had on this graphic, that families do have a choice to continue full-time remote learning. Um, let me share some information related to this. I'll share with you, um, the Step Four selection data with school percents of how many have chosen in person, how many have chosen remote. We did send, um, individual notifications to each family confirming what their choice was, just to make sure that we had all of that correct. We did all of our furniture and classroom setup, um, over, uh, the last weekend, um, and then into, um, Monday. Um, the Step Four board metrics, you know that we decided that, uh, we weren't going to, or that we, um, approved those metrics, uh, back in November, and as you know, we met those metrics. The Illinois Department of Public Health, um, site, uh, started to be updated faster than the county site, so I'll share some of that information with you. And we continue to post those metrics online so that people can follow them if they're interested. Uh, we have some updates on vaccines, um, and we have some updates on the federal relief funding, second-round payments that school districts are expected to receive. So for Step Four, um, when I created this report, um, this is what the selections were. You'll see a not-known category on the right-hand side. We now have connected with each of those families and, um, they have chosen in-person or remote. Overall, at a district level, we're at about 70% in-person and 30% remote. You can see that the choices vary, um, by school. Um, the highest in-person selection is at Olive Mary Stit at 85%. And the lowest in-person selection is at Ivy Hill at 51%. Both of our middle schools have in the 60% range, 62% at Thomas, 68% at South, choosing the in-person option, um, which, um, Step Four started officially today. Um, and we've asked families to choose, uh, until spring break, at which time we will have another opportunity to make a selection. Um, again, all furniture was delivered by January 18th. Um, teachers provided input into where they wanted their teacher workspace. So when we started the year, we kind of went through and set up a, what's the front of the room and where would teachers teach from? Um, and so as they've had chances, some time to do that, some have wished to change where their workspace was, so they provided that input. All desks continue to be facing one direction. Some furniture, um, may have been moved to the hallways or to storage. So that would be maybe some of the teachers' furniture where they were holding some of the materials for students. Um, everyone kind of worked in their own classroom of what they needed in there for kids and, and what could be moved out to make more spaces for desks. Um, desks again are spaced out to the greatest extent possible. Uh, it does depend on the number of students who have chosen in-person and the layout of room, but in general, we can have 16 desks in our average classroom and still be six-foot point-to-point, um, for students. Uh, it may be less, um, if we had to clear a path to the sink and to the doorway. We wanted to keep those paths open, um, for access in and out of the room and also so that we are asking students to wash their hands frequently. Um, but in general, in an average classroom at the elementary, six, 16 desks can meet that six-foot point-to-point. Um, and in, um, even our busiest or our, uh, most in-person classrooms at the elementary, we're at a, a four-foot-plus point-to-point distance among those students in those elementary rooms. The middle school classrooms really vary greatly, um, depending on the period of the day. Um, we've now seen today some of our periods that are most busy and, and maybe relocating some rooms. Um, but again, it really, it, it could, a first-period science class could have five feet point-to-point and a second-period science class could have two-foot point-to-point. It really depends on the number of students coming. So we're looking at our, uh, most crowded rooms and, and seeing if there are, uh, alternatives for those. Um, but in general, um, we had a good up-and-running first day. This is just one example, um, of a classroom at the middle school. What it shows you last week as we were looking at it is the gray desk tops, uh, would be new students for in-person as opposed to the tan desk tops were what the layout was in a hybrid, um, setting. And then again, we looked at, um, you know, for, again, this, the motion that the board made on November 12th, all of these bullet points are important, um, but the ones that we looked at, um, once we knew all the others were met, was the less than 8% positivity rate in Region 10, um, and/or, sorry, or less than 70 new cases per 100,000 in Arlington Heights zip code or over a seven-day period for that one, and a flatter decreasing trend of positive cases in District 25. This is an example of a website. Now, this was back as of January 13th, um, when I captured this screenshot. So the Illinois Department of Public Health now is updating, uh, daily, but they're three days behind. So if you look today, for example, on the 21st, I think they have the 18th on there. They show the daily, um, percent rate and they show a seven-day average. Today, the seven-day average is 8%. Um, we've seen that daily rate over the last week go from in the 6%'s, a couple of days in a row in the 7%'s, go up a day. So it's kind of going up and down a little bit, but we know that, um, you can see that every day we're updating it, every day that they update it. Um, and on the right is the weekly cases in Arlington Heights zip codes, 6004 and 6005. Again, this one was captured back on the 13th. That as well has gone down into the 200s, gone, you know, up to the upper 200s. Um, so we're updating that every day that it gets updated. Um, and there is a link there if people want to see that. But we did meet the board's metrics that were laid out in November, um, very clearly and made that announcement therefore over the weekend on a Saturday, um, and, uh, told people that, as we had said in a letter earlier, I think on Friday, that we would need a few days to make sure we had everything put in place. Um, and so we did that on Tuesday, Wednesday, um, and started our Step Four today. Vaccinations is the next big piece for us in District 25 and, and around the world. Um, just so, uh, to update everybody, school nurses and any medical assistants, so students that we have that have a one-on-one medical assistant, they're in Group 1A, the, the first group receiving vaccines. They're at the end of that group, but they're categorized as 1A. And they have received an opportunity to schedule their first vaccine. So again, there's three steps. You have to register, then you get your first vaccine, then you get your second. We are starting to see as of today, um, our nurses and our medical assistants getting their first vaccine. Um, in some of our neighboring counties, um, they've already began vaccines of Group 1B. Cook County's not quite there yet, but we're getting there. Um, but we at least know that our, it's actually nurses, medical assistants, it's actually social workers, psychologists and speech-language pathologists, OT and PTs. So people who may need to be one-on-one, um, with students, especially those services that they have to put their hands on students to assist them, they're all, so we've been notified in 1A and now are being able to get registered. Educators, the rest of educators are considered Group 1B. And the Cook County Department of Public Health is connecting with the regional office to begin to organize how we rank educators, what are their levels of need, um, and how registration will occur and how and when and where vaccines will be distributed. We have a, a bit of an update on that, uh, that we heard this evening from the Regional Office of Education. They have identified seven high schools within Cook County, suburban Cook County, that will be vaccination sites for educators. Um, and so, uh, in the next couple of days, they'll be asking us, they asked us for an approximate number of staff members we would have in the next few days. They'll be asking us to try to get more specific, um, on the number of staff members that we have and what site would be closest for District 25. Um, the Regional Office of Education believes that those vaccines will be available as early as February 8th. Um, we are also, as a district, working, um, with Jewel Osco, um, and have done, Stacy Malek and Brian Kay have done a lot of work, um, with them in a very short amount of time. We are hopeful that they are gonna be able to provide, um, vaccines possibly here on site, um, possibly as early as the first week of February. Again, all of this continues to be in the works, um, but I'm glad that we at least have two avenues that we see starting to come to fruition. Um, and we'll keep working on that, uh, as much as we can to get those, uh, finalized and we'll put that information out and do whatever we need to do to, um, cover staff and make arrangements for staff so that they can, um, access those vaccines as soon as they're available to them. And when we say 1B for educators, that means basically everybody in a school system that works with children, our recess supervisors, our substitutes who are working with us right now who are coming in during this time, our bus drivers will be able, um, to be, all office staff, um, at all of our schools, anybody at the district staff who interacts with any other staff i- in the building. So it's basically anyone, um, that is connected to, um, our classroom supervisors, our guest teachers that is connected to keeping District 25 running and interacting with, uh, children will be in that 1B group. And then really great news, uh, federal relief funding. So you'll remember the first round that we saw called the CARE Act. Uh, we received at that time 204,422. We used that allocation to purchase all of our one-to-one devices, to get every child a device and any, um, internet service that some of our families may have needed. That's how we used that funding, uh, when we got it in the first round. We now are told there is a Round Two coming, um, called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or you'll start to hear it called ESER. We are expecting in District 25, 675,390 is our estimation for this fiscal year. So we should see this, um, before, uh, June 30th is our understanding. Um, it must be utilized by the end of fiscal year FY23. So basically you have two years to utilize this money and the guidance is to utilize this for learning support, learning loss, social-emotional learning support. Uh, we've done a lot of work looking at this money, um, looking at our data. Uh, at the February meeting, the board will see an assessment data, um, and you'll see that overall our assessments of our students look really good, but we know in reality, our families know, our teachers know, especially our children who were struggling before COVID are struggling more now. So we need to, of course, get them some extra support. We would like to utilize that money for a free summer university for this summer and again next summer, for reading and math support courses and additional reading and math after-school supports. This year for Summer U, there, uh, for the year 2021, Summer U will be at Thomas Middle School. We've always had it at South, but South will have some internal construction going on. So we'll be hosting Summer U at Thomas Middle School from June 16th through July 14th. We'll start to send information out to families soon. And again, anyone who chooses to sign their child up for a support course, it's reading and math. I think there's even a, a typing, um, course in there as well. Um, they can sign their child up for those courses for free. Offering those, uh, these increased number of courses will need additional staffing. So our Summer U, uh, principal is working now on, uh, getting staff applications in and trying to recruit as many staff as we will need depending on the registrations that we see in the next month or two. Um, the other thing I should say is our, um, extended school year. That's our summer school for students with special needs, um, who qualify for that. Typically, we have that at Greenbrier. Um, the Village of Arlington Heights is gonna be doing some public works construction that will impact both streets around the front of Greenbrier. So we believe we'll be moving E S Y to Windsor School, um, this summer. So that, uh, program will be available as well. Again, um, Summer U will continue to also, I should say, will also have their, um, enrichment courses, so courses that teachers design, um, that, uh, are unique, um, and those always tend to have a high interest from students. They occur at all grade levels. We'll continue to offer all of those classes as well. Those will be at a tuition rate, however. The grant will go towards, um, covering the costs to support students in, um, those support classes, um, in reading and math. And of course, while I'm speaking of Summer U, we also have an EL component. We'll continue to do that. Our EL programming is free to students who qualify based on an EL grant that we get every year. Um, and so those courses will also be offered at Summer U. I think that's it from me, um, unless you have any questions.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Vice President.
Who's first?
Go ahead, Anisha.
Anisha?
Thank you, Rich. Um, so many hopeful, so much hopeful news today, right? So, so much hope and a day full of hope today for our whole district community as we move forward here with the, with students as they went back into the buildings today for those who chose in-person. And our teachers continue, our exceptional teachers continue to support those students who have chosen to stay remote. And I think that this has taken like the whole community, all of us, um, all the parents, all the teachers, the district staff. So this is really a, a big day of hope for us today and, um, my own son, I know one of our guest speakers talked about their child. My own son came back from school today and said, "Mom, today was so fun," you know? And he said, "Today I made a friend." Where when, in hybrid, it was hard. They didn't get to meet everybody. So today, definitely a day of hope for many, um, and we have to continue thinking about those students who have chosen to stay remote and, and our, our teachers and schools were very cognizant of making sure that we meet their needs too. And I think as a district and as a district community, we have to realize that families... I think as a district and as a district community, we have to realize that families across the district, they're doing what they believe is right for their own families. In our own family, you know, we have choice. Like, we have one child who's decided to go back to the second-grade classroom, one child who's a middle schooler who's staying home. So we really have to respect everybody's choices of what they've decided to do and just continue to move forward in supporting quality instruction for all. So thank you so much for everybody and the whole community for being so patient and perseverant and with all the struggles that have come with this year.
Rich?
First off, wanted to thank, you know, Dr. Bine, the staff, you know, the teachers, everyone, the custodial, everyone, even the parents, and even, you know, the work we've done here. Obviously, we made a transition very quickly over the weekend, got the place ready, got kids back, and it was a great effort. I know, I was happy to see kids going back. My daughter was happy to be going back as well. So everything was good in motion, and it's a good stepping stone to be moving forward where we need to go. So there's a lot of more progress that we need to be made, getting everyone back to where we were. And so we continue to look forward to that particular path as we move forward there. I do have some questions, though, on the presentation as we look through it. And maybe the first one to talk about, or, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the, you know, why is full in-person four days, not five days, things of that nature. So maybe if you could just explain the significance of Monday and what that role is for the teachers and the staff, and why we feel we need that at this point?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So at this point in our process, I would kind of redesign this and call it Step 4A. We may have, like Rich said, we have more steps and more things to do. At this point, the Monday asynchronous day is still very important for many reasons. One is, it allows teachers to do small-group instruction that they're unable to do in a classroom right now during COVID. And so when some students in a class are doing asynchronous work, it allows a teacher to say, "These two or four or five students, I need you on with me now so we can do some small-group instruction." It also gives teachers some collaboration time and some planned time that they need to do the dual methods of teaching that we have them doing this year. That's, like everybody has said, extra work, and they've done tremendous. But it takes some extra planned time to plan for both modes of instruction. So it also allows for that. And it's also the time that they have everybody in the same format that one day a week is as well. So at this point, we still need that Monday, again, both for that small-group instruction and for that collaboration planned time to support our teachers.
Moving on from there, thank you for that information. And I guess another piece, and was brought up by one of the parents, is within this, what type of, you know, based on what we learn, I mean, we learn everything new every time we move through things. And now with potential fluidity and things changing quickly, how will you address the need for communication or increased communication or methods of communication? What are your thoughts there as part of this overall process and plan?
Things have moved really rapidly. Sometimes things seem to go slow, but also during the pandemic, you know, last summer, we saw in July, things exponentially come out more rapidly from the Illinois Department of Public Health, new guidance, changes, new guidance, again, very rapidly. And so we had to change very rapidly. And while we do have our Remote Learning Committee, our Teacher Association that we're touching base with, we're not in our typical mode of getting all teacher input like we typically would have an opportunity to, or committees that have enough time to go back and get input and come back as a committee. So we need to work on that. We do some surveys of all staff, and it's something we'll need to increase. But also, we need to be aware that there's still, we're still in kind of a go-slow and then boom, speed up, speed up, speed up, speed up, change, change, change. So that rapidness of change can still occur, and we'll get as much input as we can. And I think you'll see, hopefully soon, maybe February, the board will see information from the Strategic Plan Team that has had teachers and parents and community members and administrators, and Anisha has served on that. That's been an amazing experience, getting everybody's input representative of all constituents. And that will really help guide us in the future as it has everybody's input. And we'll get back to our more typical modes of getting that input in an ongoing way as we continue to move through this process.
You also talked a lot about the vaccines. Is there any update on the testing? I can't recall if there was a set timeline or a date that we would be doing testing.
So we now have testing for symptomatic staff members, so for adults. We do have that rapid result testing. It is within about a 15-minute result. And any staff members that are experiencing symptoms can sign up, and that test is available every day after school. We're hosting it over at Thomas Middle School. We do not have testing for students. We have not heard vaccine updates for students yet.
Part of my last maybe question at this point, I always reserve, maybe have a question after more questions. You talked at the end about, you know, learning loss and a lot of your plans at this point, at least what I heard, were talking about maybe summer or next year, things of that nature. And I'm wondering, as you look at February and coming back with, here's more of a plan, how does that impact our eighth graders that, you know, we need something now, you know, to try to stem any type of learning loss or address any learning loss in the last four months of the year, five months? Because again, if you come back in February, it leaves maybe March, April, May, June, not even June. But it doesn't leave a lot of time to, you know, address any learning losses this year. And so as, you know, the staff starts looking at it, what are things that could be done this year? What are the options? Do we extend the current year? Do we, you know, spring break? Do we have staff in for spring break to get prepared? Things of that nature that would allow us to leverage what time we have here for all areas, whether you're in-person, whether you're remote, because again, that's an option out there and a parent choice. We need to fill all those, you know, learning methods and try to come back with some type of process there.
Yeah, I would think a more likely response for the rest of this year is as we continue to open things up, to open more after-school opportunities and for students recommended by teachers or families. Again, a reminder, we're very fortunate in District 25 and appreciate the board's support that we do have a math interventionist and a reading interventionist full-time at every school in District 25. They have already identified students based on test scores and school performance who need support in those areas and are seeing them during, right now during the school day. The high school district as well, just like over the next two years, right? Learning loss is not going to be something that's fixed in a month, right? That's not how our brains work. It's not how child development works. It's going to be over a couple of years. The high school is also working with us on supports that they'll put in place as they identify or we identify for them, students that are going into their freshman year. But for the rest of this year, and we're getting there, right? The IESA just opened volleyball for us as an opportunity that we can start to have practices and internal squad interactions. And so we're starting to open up more, and soon we should be able to open some more after-school opportunities, like you said, for eighth graders or middle schoolers who need some extra support in those areas.
Anything else?
Lori, I just thought of something. I know we had hired contact tracers for the schools, and I'm just wondering, how is that going?
Yeah, thank you again to the board. That's been a great help. Each school does have a contact tracer now. And while, as you know, the metrics or the data around us is getting better, we still are having contact tracing to do and still sending letters home to, I should share this with the board, letters home to a school anytime there's a positive case. I've just emailed principals, so this will be new for everybody. Starting next week, we will identify in those letters the grade level that that case was found on to give people a little more information. But contact tracing will likely increase over the next couple of months, right? For, as families know, as you see those letters, nine times out of 10, the letters say there is no close contact. There will be close contacts now. While we can have many of our classrooms with six-foot point-to-point distancing, for a contact tracing perspective, it has to be six feet between us. So while Gina may be six feet away point-to-point, Gina may be a close contact if I'm positive. So in theory, if we have positive cases continuing, we'll have more close contacts, so more contact tracing that will need to occur. Each of those contact tracers, if they're not actively involved in a contact trace situation right now, they're helping in other ways of the building, helping with supervision, other things. So that's been very wonderful. They've all gone through really great training. We've seen each of them already have to do some contact tracing and seen them put that training into use. So that's really much appreciated, and we think will be even more useful over the next couple of months.
Anisha?
Yeah. You know, Dr. Bine, when you presented the numbers on the different schools, we saw that there's discrepancies between some of the buildings, for instance, Ivy Hill and Olive, right? And as we look at this, you know, to start looking at it maybe from an equity standpoint, and so my question is, and something for us to consider, of course, no answers today because it's all fluid and we need to start thinking about these things, is what could we be doing as a district to consider closing this inequity, right? Closing this equity gap? Because when we look at the student populations, there's a socioeconomic difference between those schools, and there may also be a diversity difference as well. So some thoughts on that, Paul?
Yeah. So Anisha, actually, what you're representing is seen in research across the state of Illinois, that school districts that have a higher African-American population and a higher low-income population have less people choosing in-person. So school districts, the Black community overall, in research, is choosing remote more than the white community. And our low socioeconomic families are choosing remote more than our middle-income, high-income families across the state of Illinois. So Anisha, you've seen the two extremes in those two schools. But as we look at all of our schools across District 25, we don't see that same situation. One of our other schools, I think, Greenbrier has 33% remote. We would not consider Greenbrier one of our low socioeconomic schools, nor one of our racially diverse schools. So we're not seeing that across the district, but those two schools are, could be examples of that. We just don't know for sure. But it is something that we need to be aware of. Families with low socioeconomic status tend to have multi-generations of their families living in the same home. That could, we know across the state, that's a reason. Children are choosing remote because grandparents also live at home. And so, and we know from Department of Public Health statistics that the Black community does have a higher rate of COVID. And so that could be a safety concern for some families. Again, we're not seeing that across the district right now, but it's something that we definitely need to pay attention to. Make sure that if our children are choosing, our families are choosing to keep their children home because they don't feel safe because of COVID, or because they have multi-generational needs, or because they have low socioeconomic and parents can't get them to school, or whatever it is, we need to be aware of that, and we'll continue to look into that. We are really pleased that 99% of those students are engaging significantly in remote learning. We do have a handful of students that we're working on that we're not seeing regularly in remote learning. In fact, we have two new school resource officers, and we already used one today to help us do a wellness check on a family. But overall, we'll need to make sure, yeah, that we are providing, again, the opportunity is there for everybody, but we need to be aware that different families, whether it's for a cultural or for a socioeconomic reason, may not feel they can access those opportunities the way we offer them. So we'll continue to be aware of that.
Thanks so much, Dr. Bine, for kind of keeping a pulse on that. And then like you just said, you brought up, you know, for many reasons, including the health vulnerabilities or multi-generational families living in apartment complexes or in family homes, whatever the case may be. We do have a, we're so, so glad that everybody who has chosen to be in schools, they're in schools, and the percentages show it. But we also have that remote percentage, right? And so how do we approach the needs of our remote children and their social-emotional needs? Of course, when it was time, when our kids were remote and hybrid, we saw, we're continuously at this uptick in social-emotional need for our community during the pandemic. But now on the flip side, how do we continue to make sure the social-emotional needs and increased loneliness during this time for those kids who are at home and seeing all their friends at school, and for whatever reason, they can't, they can't be at school? So feelings of missing out and loss of connections from that group. And I know that we beefed up social workers at the middle school. So is there anything else we could do, and just to kind of keep an eye on that as well?
Yeah, again, our, again, another strength of our teachers is checking in on their students and knowing how they're doing. I've been in several classrooms that when they're interacting with their kids remotely, they're saying, "Oh, you know what, Janie, why don't you and I talk in a minute?" And then Janie and the teacher might chat back, "I'm feeling lonely," or "I don't understand," or "I'm sad that my friend is there," what have you. So our teachers really are very well in touch with that. As you said, Anisha, we did increase the number of social workers at our middle schools within the last year. And our social workers definitely are very, very busy, but we would ask any family that feels that their student could need some extra support. We want to know about that. Social-emotional learning, as you know, Anisha, is, has come through loud and clear in strategic planning, is one of our top things to focus on moving forward. And again, the board will see that report soon. And as you know, we're in the first year of a Ruler program out of the Yale University. This year, really focused on adults understanding the program, and next year, implementing it with children. Many of our teachers have begun to implement some of that program with students as they've seen the need. And so we'll just have to, you know, we just have to keep on it and keep aware and encourage our families. If we're not reaching out to you because we have a concern and you have a concern with your child, do let your teacher, the school social worker, the principal know.
Thank you so much. And just hearing it from you today, for any parents who are watching, I know it'll mean a lot throughout the process, that communication piece. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
I want to camp on to Anisha's question, but I also want to pull from some of the other topics we've been talking about. And in an effort to kind of move forward and change from being more reactive to being more proactive, you indicated that in the February meeting, we're going to start to look at potentially some of the achievement gaps that we may have identified have started to arise. When we are looking at that information, can we proactively take a look against these measurements in an effort to see what's happening between our remote efforts and our in-person efforts? So that, because even with the hybrid, we've been in a 70-30 space. That way, when we look at the data, instead of having to repeat and look at the data in February and then come back and revisit it in March, if we could proactively kind of overlay some of the way we've been in hybrid and how we're going to be addressing not only the social-emotional side of it, but also any achievement gaps that we have identified, and how we're going to be moving forward in addition to Summer U that you've already mentioned.
Yeah, just want to make sure I understand you correctly. So bringing that data in a way to the board that we can also say, and this is what it looks like if you look at remote students, this is what, we can take a look at that.
Yes, please.
Mr. Vice President?
Rich?
Good point, Gina. I think that's an excellent way to look at it. Again, it helps respond to the choice of parents that are making in this situation. I want I want to go back to Erin's point, because when she started talking about her point, brought up substitutes and volunteers, and I know we haven't gotten an update on that scenario, but I know we've tried to engage more substitutes, you know, even into the building more permanently, how that's coming along, or just in general, how our substitutes or even volunteers are working through the process.
The board, thank you. The board will see on your personnel report quite an extensive list of recess supervisors that we've added, food service employees that have come back. We are doing much better in terms of classroom coverage with guest teachers than we were in late November and throughout the month of December. There are still a few days that I see Dr. Kay's evening email saying, "We have 10 unfilled positions, please call me principal, let me know how you're working these out, or if you need support." But that's much less extreme than what we were struggling with in December, is that correct, Brian? We continue to sign up anybody who has an interest in being a substitute and going through that process. We have had, and we appreciate, community members who have responded and are able to support us in that way. I wouldn't say we're overflowing with guest teachers, but we've definitely had some interest in, in terms of classroom supervision. We had some great interest from college kids who were home, many of them will starting to go back next week, so we'll see a decrease in those people who are able to help us out there. But again, we'll, should also see less of a need for that moving forward.
You know, maybe as a, I had the opportunity to do it at Thomas, and I'd encourage, if you have the means to volunteer, to volunteer, you know, whatever role to play. The energy of the kids is, you know, is inspiring. You forget about it at times, that, "Oh, yeah, I was at that age," or what that age was like, but it's incredible to interact with them, and they're, you know, just the way they think, it's great to go through that particular process. One of the things maybe to highlight, we've, throughout the discussion today, we've talked a lot about teachers, and so want to make sure that we do give a shout out to the teachers. Throughout this process, oftentimes, we talk about the staff and, you know, the things that they're doing, but we do forget about the individual role that the teacher plays for a child in their classroom. And I think, you know, Dr. Byrne, you've talked about where the teachers didn't want, like, the Zoomers, and just separate the Zoomers, things of that nature, because they make a little, like, pseudo-family, right, within their areas, and I think that's really supportive. And I think it, you know, in the presentation we had earlier with the culture, it's very, very representative there that, you know, oftentimes, we, 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 I don't want to say take for granted, but we don't necessarily think about the great teachers that we have within the district. So I think the continued support that we've been able to give to them is, is actually very good, and we should continue that.
Anything else? I just wanted to add, you mentioned that we've actually added a School Resource Officer in the process, and that's wonderful that we're working well with the Arlington Heights Police Department, because it's been mentioned numerous times in comments from the community that during this time, it's essential that we check on our kids at home, and doing those well-being checks is essential to making sure that the abuse and neglect that is maybe being, is not being seen by a child in the classroom is, is being addressed in some fashion. So I, that's wonderful that Arlington is, is helping us out in adding another SRO. I know that's a big burden for both the police department and the school to kind of, to do that. I do have one question from the final slide, based on, and this should be just an easy, probably yes, question, but it says, "The federal relief funding supported the one-to-one technology," and that's something that we are going to move forward with and sustain ourselves from this point forward, that it's one-to-one, and this is our baseline, and we're going to go forward from here, is that correct?
We're having those discussions now.
Okay, because, yeah, that's, that's wonderful, that, that we have that one-to-one, and we move up from here. All right, we do have a, this is an action item, and we do have a recommended motion. It is sort of a, I don't want to say outdated motion, but it's something that's a, kind of, things have progressed since that motion was recommended. Is there a, anybody who wants to read that motion, or another motion that anybody would like to propose? All right, not hearing anything, I think we'll just move on to the next item. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Update. Dr. Byrne?
Thank you. Can you guys upload that next, or is it already on here, maybe? Thank you. During the 2019-2020 school year, the board remembers, we had a Diversity Advisory Committee, which was made up of parents, community members, and administrators. The group began to share some areas that they felt could be improved in District 25. At the same time, there were several staff book study groups in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. At the end of last year, from the Diversity Advisory Committee, we actually had a parent and staff members together. We were going to go to the Harvard Institute on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that's when COVID hit, and that seminar got canceled, and we did not get to move in that direction. And then this year, I might even have this up here. This year, at the start of the school year, the Board of Education approved a resolution affirming the Arlington Heights School District 25 Board of Education's commitment to eliminate racial injustice. I actually felt so touched by that, I have that framed in my office, is probably one of my favorite things the board has done to take that very clear step. And they also approved a policy, 1:32, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. With the approval of that policy, that's basically then the directive to the superintendent and administration on things to start moving forward with. So now, we are beginning a much more structured, focused work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're working with the Illinois Commission on Diversity and Human Relations, and we had our first professional development with all district administrators, excuse me, this week. We did a very engaged webinar on cognitive and implicit biases in decision-making for educators. In addition, with the Illinois Commission on Diversity and Human Relations, we worked with Dr. Destiny Peary. She is a, I guess I would call her a social scientist, professor at Northwestern University. She's also been a professor at Duke. She also has a law degree, and has done extensive work in this area. And so she has partnered with the commission, and she facilitated our training on Wednesday that we did via Zoom at this time, and it really was a transformational day. Our agreement with the Illinois Commission will allow us to provide all of these workshops for administrators, then also for staff, and then also some opportunities to invite the community. So the topics that we're scheduling right now, in addition to the one that we did this week, is a webinar on microaggressions, bias interruption, and confronting bias. We'll have a facilitated dialogue opportunities, again, for our community as well as our staff, on what does diversity, equity, and inclusion mean to District 25? And we'll have another workshop on building an inclusive culture, pedagogy, and curriculum. We are going to work with the commission as well on an equity audit for our curriculum, our assessments, and our instructional practices. They're also going to help us, we're still, you know, crafting our final agreement with them, on an equity audit of our marketing and hiring practices. I know we've talked in this room about we're not seeing diverse candidates applying for teaching roles in District 25. We know there's, we know we're going to see a big teacher shortage across the country. We're even going to see a more significant shortage in diverse candidates. There's already a low percentage of diverse candidates, that's going to decrease exponentially more than even general teacher candidates. So as we talk about wanting our teacher staff to reflect our change in our student population, that's going to be a real struggle, knowing the decrease in candidates that's coming across the country. And as we've looked at our practices here in District 25, and we keep asking ourselves, well, no one's applying, what can we do if no one's applying? So the commission will help us on marketing and be more, be more welcoming and interesting to candidates of diversity. The commission has done the same type of things with many police forces across the suburbs as well. And as we mentioned briefly, our strategic plan team has been including conversations about diversity, equity, and inclusion in their work that we can expect to see in the final product. I saw a draft of the final goals that the committee will see next month, and diversity, equity, and inclusion is definitely a strong topic of interest moving forward. So that's it. I just wanted to give you a short update. You know, it's been a long road to get to this point of starting our focused professional development, but we look forward to, again, rolling that out to staff soon, and also including our community in some of those workshops, as well as the dialogues.
Questions, comments, concerns? Anisha?
Yeah, no, it was really, it was great to see during the strategic planning over the months that we've been working, this topic came up many times from community members and from students. Actually, I was really moved by a student graduated from District 25, who goes to Buffalo Grove now, who talked extensively about his experience with diversity, equity, and he had so many great suggestions for us as a, in our little group, and I know that it was captured, that, so that was really neat to see so much engagement around that topic. Here's a question for, so, you know, when you talked about it, and I know we started with the Diversity Advisory Committee, will that continue?
Yeah, we'll need to look at how we bring that group back together, and in what stage or what format, we haven't gotten there yet, but we'll, as you know, Reverend Brooks, who is a part of the Illinois Commission of Diversity and Human Relations, was a part of organizing that group along with me, and so, again, I'll start some conversations on how to get that going again, and in what capacity, and in what format does it participate moving forward?
That'd be great, and I think it'd be important, if that, you know, if it's decided that that will be best for our district, that Diversity Advisory Committee, which I think it was great input from the community that way, that we also have board representation on that team, so one or two board members, so we're in the loop, because this takes a mindset shift for our whole community, and we should be kind of part of that, listening part of that. Thank you.
Erin?
Lori, I just, I really appreciate that this is a source of pride for you, and, you know, I'd just like to share in that, it's very important work, and I'm grateful that it's happening.
All right, moving on. Second reading of policies, this is an action item, do I have a motion?
Mr. Pres-
Go ahead. Oh, Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the second reading of the policies and exhibits presented by the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Thank you. Erin? Have a second. Rich, seconds? Any questions, comments, and concerns on these policies? With nothing, we'll take it to a vote, let's start with Anisha. Yes? All right, six-nothing passes. I'll move on to the second reading of policies, five-year review, and this is also an action item, so I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Erin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the second reading of the policies presented by the Illinois Association of School Boards for a five-year review.
Thank you, Erin, and do I have a second? Is that Rich? All right, Rich, seconds. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, we'll start with Rich. Vote? Yes? That's six-nothing as well, passes. Moving on, the first reading of policy. Dr. Byrne?
So I'll just share that this is a policy recommendation change for 2:230, which is public participation at Board of Education meetings and petitions to the board. And as you can see, a change in law, we need to update this policy, and that's why Vice President read a different script tonight. We cannot require that people refrain from discussing specific personnel, nor specific students. We can, again, ask that people, you know, use decorum and be aware of that, but it's not something that we can force someone to keep from doing, so we need to update our policy for that.
All right, and you mentioned students as well, I just would hope never anyone would bring that up in this forum, but you never know, so, we'll revisit that next month.
Scott, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm just curious, Lori, about the, do you know the reasoning behind this?
Yeah, actually, it's, a lot of school districts have the same policy that we have. This is a policy through the Illinois Association of School Boards, but as we looked into it further, our attorney confirmed, you actually cannot, you can't stop someone from speaking if they're speaking about an individual person. And so we decided we needed to update our policy so that we weren't giving the impression that you couldn't speak about individual people. We can, again, request that people use decorum and kindness, and that they talk directly to someone if they have a concern with them, but we can't leave them to think that they can't do it.
I guess I'm just surprised if it came to a student, and I would, I just, I guess I would think that would be private.
You would hope that it would be, yes.
Yeah, I think, anybody can say, I know the school board is held to a higher standard, but we're not going to discuss anything student-related or specifically, so, you know, we must, you know, allow people to speak freely is what. But I think the board is under agreement that, or just our policy, we're not going to talk about, about students in general to the, in an open meeting. Correct, yes. All right. Moving on, Personnel and Planning, this is Dr. Kay. Step on up.
Just want to make sure it's okay that I use my table. Thanks. So tonight, I am prepared to talk about the proposed calendar for next school year, and I am as excited as I hope all of you are to think about what next school year will look like. So before I share the results of what the calendar committee has come up with that I am proposing tonight, I just want to say, you know, thank you to all the work you guys have done to get us to where we are today, this milestone day, 1/21/21, where kids can come in full four days a week, which is very exciting. I heard parents talk about kids waking up at 2:00 in the morning, I would be one of them as well. I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers as well in getting prepared for today. I came in over the weekend just to get some things settled, and I saw all the district office staff ready to go, specifically Ryan Schultz and his staff, and getting all the furniture in the classrooms. And I know I wasn't at every school building, but many of the school buildings had cars in the parking lot, so teachers getting their space ready for kids. So it really did feel like another first day of school, and I know we have a ways to go this year, and we'll continue to learn and grow, but a big thank you to you guys, a big thanks to the parents for being patient, and a huge kudo- being patient, and a huge kudos to our staff for getting us to this point. It's awesome. It feels great. So now, let's look at what the school calendar will look like potentially for 2021, 2022. So, the Calendar Committee's main goal is to prepare a school calendar that will meet the needs of our stakeholders and to best meet the needs of our students. In addition, the Calendar Committee attempts to build as much continuity and cohesiveness with the structure of the school calendar in order to capitalize on student learning. Therefore, the school calendar reflects on the school calendar from the previous year, this year, and there is an opportunity to discuss what has worked well and what may, we may look to change for the future. The District Calendar Committee is comprised of representatives from the PTA Council, the Arlington Teachers Association, and District 25 administrators. This is a collaborative process between the representatives serving on the committee. We consider individual requests of each stakeholder group and attempt to build a calendar that best meets the needs of District 25. I would like to thank the participants who served this year on the Calendar Committee, including the administrators, Steve Perkins, Erin Davis, Donna Binghamman, and Akemi Sessler; the parent representatives, Luan Eisenhardt and Lisa Kasumpa; and the members of the ATA, including Oksana Lukashevsky. If you're listening, Oksana, I did it right. Karen Jones, Allison Anderley, and Kelly Drevelin for serving on the committee this school year. As in years past, the primary focus of the group was to align the school calendar to District 14 as closely as possible for the benefit of our District 25 families. I would like to highlight some of the following pieces of our proposal. Teachers and teaching assistants will report to work starting on Monday, August 16th, for an institute day, followed by Tuesday, August 17th, another institute day, and Wednesday, August 18th, our traditional teaming day. District 25 students will begin their year on Thursday, August 19th, where we'll all be up again at 2:00 AM. As a reference, District 214 students will start on August 11th, one week prior. We are recommending hosting the parent-teacher conferences earlier in the school year during the months of October and February. There was a continued belief on the committee that shifting conferences earlier in the school year will allow teachers to better communicate the needs of students to the parent community after having done the assessments in the fall. To further align more closely with District 214 and matching what we added to the calendar this school year is observing non-attendance days in September, specifically in the 7th and 16th this year. The belief in align, in aligning more days with District 214 is to help support our community and staff who have children in both districts. The final change recommended by the committee was to build emergency days back into the calendar at the end of the school year, because we anticipate being able to use e-learning days instead of a true emergency day. This should help our families with a more predictable schedule in June. Other items that we took into account included District 214's winter and spring break schedule, of course. Aligning these two helps our districts, helps our families with convenience, because we have many families with students in both District 214 and 25. Other important dates include strategic placement of our institute days for school improvement, to analyze student data, and further bolster our student, or our staff professional development. The last day for students will be a full day of student attendance on Friday, June 3rd, and the last day for our staff will be the next Monday that we call Records Day, June 6th. That is assuming we have no emergency days. As a reference, the last day of attendance for District 214 is a week before, on Friday, May 27th. The calendar design continues to be a collaborative process by many stakeholders and fulfills the requirements that the Illinois State Board of Education has instituted. I want to once again thank the Calendar Committee for their work and contributions. Thank you for your time this evening, as I talk a little bit about the proposal for next year, and I am happy to take any questions about what the committee has put in front of you.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's a daunting task for you and the committee, so, so thank you much.
But it's exciting to focus on the future.
It is. It's, yeah, Erin.
Brian, a question for you. I, I really appreciate how aligned we are with District 214. That's great for myriad reasons, but I'm wondering, I know they, so they start a week earlier in 214 and finish a week earlier. Will we eventually line up completely with them, or is there a reason we don't?
Yeah, there's a shared, there's a good conversation that takes place every year regarding, do we try and match them perfectly? And what isn't revealed on this calendar as we talk about it is, all of the new staff we hire, they start that full week. So we are bringing them in on that Monday, the week before everyone else, and have, they have a full week of training that we prepare for them. So although it looks like still a, a summer week, you know, we're inviting staff to help them get acclimated. All the mentors are being, are being asked to come in. So the conversation starts, how closely can we align to the start date? And the only thing that we really talk about is not putting two weekends in between the start of the high school and the start of District 25. So the committee always comes down to the following week. Sometimes it aligns, you know, maybe on a Monday or Tuesday, but they want one weekend in between. And if you were to start when the high school does, then all of our new staff starts a week prior to that, which is the first week of August. So that, that looks intimidating to people on the committee when we look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. K, for that. And I love the 1/21, 1/21/21 is this momentous day. I didn't catch that until you said it, so we'll, we'll all remember that and celebrate that.
We will.
And thank you for your work on the Calendar Committee, and I wanted to, for the sake of the community, let them know that we, we always know that this calendar work is going to be done amazingly by Dr. K, because you were just selected by the Illinois Association of School Personnel Administrators as a new member, because of your distinguished work in less than three years in the role at the local, state, and national level. So congratulations, Dr. K.
You're very kind. Thank you.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, and maybe more of a statement. As we're looking at the achievement gap, I want to make sure that we maintain the availability and maybe alter the calendar if need be, based on the assessments that you all do. Maybe we need more days, less days, you know, shifting how we address the specific needs as you look at the data.
Yeah, that is the, the board's right kind of responsibility to approve a calendar and, and to edit that calendar should you see the need to. Of course, there are lots of components to that, right, that we have to consider, but at any time, the board could ask that it be put on a future agenda to be reviewed or changed.
So with that, do we have a motion? I don't see a red light, Rich. Rich proposed. Erin, second. We'll start with Anisha.
Yes.
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 All right, passes, six, nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting. We need a motion to adjourn and back, go back into closed session.
Mr. President.
Yes, Rich.
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session, move back into closed session.
Rich, Erin, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Just so our audience knows, when a board goes into closed session, they cannot take any action in closed session. There are only certain things the law allows them to discuss. Again, they can't take action, and we do not plan to come back into a regular session to take action afterwards. So you're welcome to stick around, but we're not going to have any further business in open session.